In session. We're now in open session pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting will be held remotely. The information is on the agenda on joining either by phone or through the Internet with the link provided on the agenda, which has been posted on the town's website. No one person attendance, members of the public we permitted. We will post the, the meeting as quickly as we possibly can. And the meeting is not to be considered official public record of the meeting. So good evening, Alan. We've got you here first to talk about, get an update on wage and personnel.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. So the first thing I just wanted to mention, I wanted to thank the board for your appointment. It's been a while now, but I haven't spoken to you of Dave Bugbee to the Wage and Personnel Board. He's doing an excellent job. He was a really nice addition to wage and personnel, and we have been understaffed for a while. So thank you for that. I guess the main thing that I would update you is terms of what wage and personnel is currently working on is we're embarking on a fairly ambitious project in that we're going to have prepared for town meeting, a full revision and update of the Plimpton Wage and Personnel Bylaw. From, from where we sit, that's something that's been needed for quite a while. It had, you know, parts of it have been updated. From time to time over the years, last year, spring meeting, last year Liz had several things that pertained to directly to the Wage and Personnel Bylaw that needed to be updated. So we, I think there were two or three articles that we worked with her and brought those to town meeting and those passed handily with no issues. But it just highlighted the fact that we, our bylaw, many parts of it are quite dated. So, which is, you know, not uncommon in the town of Plimpton, unfortunately. So. So what we've done, we did some research in surrounding towns. And we've been corresponding with Liz on this, and we found that the town of Kingston has a pretty comprehensive wage and personnel bylaw. So we're going to, as long as Kingston is okay with it, and Liz, I don't know, is Liz here?
Yeah, Alan.
Oh, hi Liz. Have you, did I ask you to ask Kingston if it's okay if we look at?
You did, you did. And it's actually giving me a good reminder. I did not back from them with my first inquiry, but I will give, I'll give them a call tomorrow.
Okay, great. I don't think they'll mind. I just thought it would be a special thing for us to ask their permission before we start being inspired by them, so.
I agree. I think that's a good idea. They were very helpful in preparing for last town meeting, specifically with the vacation time. They sent me what they had and everything, so I don't anticipate any problem. But I never did hear back from the email that I sent them when we had communicated. So I will follow up with them and make sure that there's no issue.
Great, I appreciate that. So just to give you a couple of examples of the differences between the Kingston Wage and Personnel Bylaw and ours, there's an entire section on the, the responsibilities of the town administrator as it pertains to wage and personnel. And if you look at the Plimpton Bylaw, there's very little mention of the town administrator's role in all of this. And of course, there's a good reason for that. It's because we didn't have a town administrator prior to having Liz. So I think just that alone should be a very nice enhancement to our bylaw. Because now we do have Liz, we do have a town administrator. And Kingston goes into great detail explaining the role of the town administrator. And I personally think, having been on wage and personnel for, I don't know, 12 years or something like that, that that particular clause will be really clarifying to the townspeople and to town employees. Because many times over the years, we have gotten, wage and personnel gets inquiries from either by, you know, department heads or committee heads or something like that, asking us to intervene in daily personnel issues, which is really not the role of the wage and personnel group at all. So that particular section detailing what the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator are responsible for, I think will be really helpful. The second area where I think we can learn a lot from them is they have very, very detailed rules regarding compensation for both hourly and exempt or, or salary positions. And again, in the interest of being preemptive and not, you know, hopefully answering people's questions before they even have to ask them, I think by building something similar to that into our bylaw, it's going to help the town a lot. Now it will, it will enhance this bylaw quite a bit. So, you know, the two, when you compare the, the two bylaws side by side, Plimpton and Kingston, you know, Kingston obviously is a much bigger town. I think they're at least twice our size. But you can tell by looking at their bylaw that a lot of thought and good work has gone into developing that. So I think we're going to learn a lot from it. We will be, the Wage and Personnel Board, which is myself, Dave Bugbee and Elise Lyons, as we go through this process, we will be very active in reaching out to, you know, Liz and reaching out to the Board of Selectmen to keep you guys posted and get your input as we develop it. Because, you know, I don't anticipate anything particularly controversial or, or difficult in rewriting or refurbishing this bylaw. But I think it's important that you all have a chance to really weigh in on it, see what's going on. And you may, you may well want to pull other key department heads, particularly, I would think, the fire chief. The police chief is not in the school department, of course, I'm sure you all know, are not involved in wage and personnel. Those are separate contracts. And we do not have any responsibilities as it pertains to the, the school or the police. But we do have responsibilities that pertains to the fire department and also the highway department and the town, town house employees and things like that. So before we make any recommendations, you can expect to see drafts of the work in process as we go along. So any questions for me?
Sounds great.
That's all great.
Yeah, it's, it's good, it'll be good work. And I mean, given the, the schedule for the warrants, so we have roughly between now and the end of March to really develop this and, and build it out and get it done and get it ready for town meeting. So we will, we'll probably be stepping up the frequency of our meetings, I think, in order to be able to accomplish it.
Great, thank you, Alan.
You're very welcome. All right, if, if no one has any additional questions, then I'll just let you go on with the rest of your meeting.
I think we're good.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Alan. Good night.
See you all.
See you.
Happy fall.
Safe to you. All right, so next item on the agenda is vote of agreements. And these are agreements with Sergeant Dan Hoffman and Acting Sergeant Matthew All. So I'll make a motion that the board sign the employment agreement with Dan Hoffman, which is going to be effective August 26, 2021 until August 26, 2024. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay. The next is a, I'll make a motion that we sign the employment agreement with Matthew All, effective August 26, 2021 until June 30, 2022. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay, very good. Okay, so our next item of business is vote to authorize town officials to have access to the Plimpton County ARPA portal. Go ahead, Liz.
On this one, the county sent us suggested language, which has been vetted by Town Council. If it's easier for the board, would you like me to read? There's a little preamble that applies votes. And then if you want, I can just read the votes and you can move it as that, if that works.
That sounds perfect, Liz.
Okay, so it says, "The town may apply to Plymouth County for grants for certain eligible purposes to be funded from a grant received by Plymouth County pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act. The county will receive applications for such grants through its online portal. The county requires evidence of town authorization before granting access to the portal. The following votes will authorize one town official to supply the county with all supporting data for each application and another town official to approve the application and make the required representations and certifications on behalf of the town to complete and submit the applications." The first vote is that Elizabeth Dennehy, Town Administrator, is authorized to approve, finalize and submit on behalf of the town of Plimpton, any such ARPA grant application and to make all representations and certifications required to be made on behalf of the town to complete each such application with such approval, representations and certifications to be evidenced by the signature of the town administrator on such application. And if any such ARPA grant is awarded, the town administrator shall be the recipient of such grant on behalf of the town." So that's the first vote.
Okay, can we do that one first?
I would.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we make the vote as read by, by Liz.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes.
Okay, then the second vote will have that same preamble. And then the vote itself is as follows. That Lisa Hart, Town Accountant, is authorized to prepare and enter information into the Plymouth County American Rescue Plan Portal in support of one or more applications to Plymouth County for grants, specifically known as ARPA grants, to be funded from a grant received by Plymouth County under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we make the appointment for the town accountant as read by Liz.
A second.
Second roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right, thank you, Liz, very much.
We, I'll email you that language for the minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, though, just going to ask you that. Thank you.
Okay, next item, update and/or award of bid regarding engine, is that engine one or just engine refurbishment project?
Engine one.
Engine one. Okay, Liz, do you want to talk about this one?
Sure, so we had the bid opening for the engine one refurbishment project for the fire department. The bid opening was that on October 14th, and we received one bid from Greenwood. They're based out of Attleboro, Mass. It was for much more than the amount that we appropriated back at town meeting. So I believe for this particular project, we may have to go back to the drawing board and possibly take some things out of the specifications or look to see if there are other funding sources. So it doesn't appear that we're able to award the bid at this time, but we're going to like, take a look at everything and see if any adjustments can be made and maybe we could rebid the project.
Do you need us to take any official action, Liz?
No, it's just when we were posting the agenda, I wasn't sure how the results would come in. If it had been more than our price range, we would have been able to move forward. But
Okay.
Unfortunately, that's not the case.
That's unfortunate. Okay, so next item on the agenda are appointments. So we've got Nathaniel Sides, Plimpton Cultural Council through 1018, 2024. Jessica Kinsman, Open Space Committee through 630, 2024. Jackie Rafferty, Open Space Committee through 630, 2023. Alan Wheelock, Community Preservation Committee through 630, 2024. Special Police Officers, James Volter and Mark Gabriel through 630, 2022. Nathan Christopheri, Animal Control Officer, Animal Control Coordinator through 630, 2022. Animal Control Officer, Via Carver, Kathy Sealy and Elise Senior through 630, 2022. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mark, did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
I was going to beat John on the second.
Sorry, I'm taking your, I'm taking your space, Mark.
Too slow.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, all right. So those appointments are done. Okay, Liz, on to town administrators' updates.
Um, so for the townhouse roof project, John Wilhamsen and I have been in communication with our design architect and engineer. As another portion of the design phase and putting together the specifications for the bid package, we do need to have some sampling done of the roof material to make sure that if there's any sort of asbestos or anything like that, that anyone bidding on the project knows what they may or may not be getting into. So we received a separate proposal. And this is from Universal Environmental Consultants, and they were recommended by Habib and Associates, who's our main architect and design engineer on this. And it will cost us $3,050. And as part of those services, they will find a licensed roofer to cut and patch the roof for various sampling areas that are identified in the plans. They will collect the samples and forward them to a licensed laboratory. They will prepare a report with the sample results. And they will prepare specific specifications within the contract documents that we issue as part of the bid package. And they are also going to be on call to answer any questions from prospective bidders once it's out to bid, if they have a question about some of the sample results or anything like that. I don't believe it requires anything particular from the board at this time, but I would like to wait to sign off on it until Town Properties has a chance to just look at it, unless John suggests something different. But it's part of the design services and it's a requirement. So you've already approved the design services phase of this.
I wouldn't wait. We'll, we'll talk about it, but I, I mean, it's, we need this information. We need to have a complete bid package or the costs go up more than they go up anytime we seem to bid.
Okay, so I'll plan to sign off on that so that they can get started. And then also with Habib and Associates, they just returned to us the results of the library and fire department roof assessments. I haven't had a chance yet to read through those, but those have come in and I will forward them to the board. And I believe John received them to the Town Properties Committee, so more.
When did those come in? Was that last week?
It was a Friday afternoon, I believe. Pull it up in my email and I'll read forward it.
I'll just, I was not, not working last week, so I missed probably some emails.
It got buried within some of the other emails about the sampling of the townhouse.
Okay. Well, I know it's there, I'll go dig it out and I'll send it around to the rest of the community.
Okay. And then for our ADA ramp project at the townhouse, the contractor was in today meeting with Tom Millias to see about pulling the permit. And we're going to be meeting with him later this week as far as kicking off construction. And his firm is working on getting us the bonds that they need and the insurance cert so that we can sign the contract package. They seem eager to get going, though. They had safe mount, so if you're at the townhouse and you see the markings on the ground, that's what that's for. They had DigSafe come out and identify the utilities and everything. So they seem like they're going to be good to work with and like they're very excited about the project. Scott Benton is all officially started and on board as our interim police chief. And he has worked with the police department and they're going to put on an open house at the police department, open to the public to give tours of the building and to talk with some of the officers. And that is scheduled for Saturday, October 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They put something out on social media with a little flyer, so we shared it to the towns' page. And we can also try to push that out through an email blast so that everybody has the date and the time. But that sounds like it's going to be a nice event. They're also working to get the sheriff's department there, possibly to do fingerprinting for the kids if parents want to have that done, for the kids ID kits and everything. So they're going to have a few different events set up that day. So more details to come, but seems like he's off to a great start. We're finishing off some of the technology projects that have kind of been ongoing. All of the phones are in good working order now. We're finishing up some stuff with some of the fax lines. We need to look at some of the alarm system lines coming into the various buildings. But Matt Clancy left us in a very good spot with that. And all the vendors are in touch with one another and working well together. So I would say we're 95% done with the technology projects. And then the highway department has done the preliminary roadway markings for the safety zones using the enlarged stencil. I think it came out really good. Some of the feedback that we're getting is that it's wonderful what they did, just possibly putting more of the same pattern, maybe going back in intervals of 50 or 75 feet, so that people really see it as they're approaching. But so far, the feedback has all been favorable, just kind of like, can we do more of, of what's currently out there? But the design itself came out really good. And that concludes my update. And I don't have anything specific in correspondence.
Christine, you're muted.
Thank you. John Wilhamsen, did you have anything you wanted to add? You're muted, John. We should have a little sign.
Muted. We usually don't because it's quiet enough down here. But I guess the only thing I'd mention is they're, they're pushing ahead full bore with the playground. And the question is going to come later this month about whether they'll be able to proceed with the rubberized coating. The good news on that is that that's up to the company that puts down the rubberized coating, not up to us saying, yes, go for it. So depending on the weather and where they could slot us in, we'll either do the rubberized coating end of October, early November, or that will have to wait till the spring and they'll use wood chips, a lot of wood chips for the, for the, for the installation until the, till the spring or summer next year. So we're sort of waiting on that, but they were up there this weekend working on it. And I think it's going to be a really, really nice, really nice installation. And I think the location of it actually is better because it's tucked in that back corner and really has its own sort of, own sort of spot instead of, sort of spread out all across the septic field, which is where it was before in various pieces and places. So everyone's waiting anxiously for it and, and that's going to be a great project. And, and Mark, I wasn't sure, if you have another one of the CPA signs, we may want to put that out up there at some point. So folks are reminded that this is, you know, a partially funded CPA project.
Absolutely. Thank you for the reminder. I'll dig one out. Thank you.
Great, thank you, John. Thanks for the update. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which contains our minutes and the warrants paid. Are you all okay with the minutes staying on the consent agenda?
Yes.
I didn't have any changes. Okay, perfect. All right, and let me read you.
I had, I had just one question about the minutes. Is that all right?
Sure, what's your question?
I noticed under any other business that legally may become for the board, we've added a sentence and also in the, in the agenda, was, is that suggested by town council or? Or am I noticing it for the first time?
What does it say?
It says, "This item is included to provide members of the public with notice that matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair could be raised, deliberated and even voted at this meeting."
I believe that's been on there for quite a while.
It's been on there since I started with the town. At the time, I believe, back when you guys maybe had Ilana Quirk as council, she had and it held over.
I, I, thank you, and I'm sorry to even bring it up. I've, I've just never noticed it before in minutes and I'm, I'm glad to see it and it's an interesting item. Sorry.
No, that's all right. Before in the minutes, but maybe because it was on the agenda, it made, it's on every agenda, but I don't recall seeing it in the minutes before.
Which is fine, and there's no reason it shouldn't be there, it couldn't be there.
Okay. All right, so now on to warrants, and I apologize, I could not get these to go straight on my screen. So we've got Doing Schmidt Kerns. This is the town barn roof, $1,714.59. We've got KP Law. We've got Comcast and Verizon. Total of the warrant was $10,036.41. Verizon, Crystal Rock and a reimbursement to Leanne Cashman, looks like it was for some donuts, she got it Dunkin' Donuts. Total is $501.33. Next one is Verizon, US Bank, Verizon, Amazon, Local Computer and Express Newspaper. Total $781.87. Then we've got more Eversource, looks like one, two, three, Eversource, Local Computer Store, a couple of Obishans, GL Randall Electric and Wheelabrader, who is now doing our trash. Total for that warrant was $2,231.50. Then we've got Floors by George, this was carpet install, the highway floor, this was a water claim with, with M. Maya, Maya. And that was $1,426.23. A bunch of Eversource for a total of $1,394.99. And that is it for warrants. So I'll make a motion that we accept the items on the consent agenda as printed for the minutes and as read for the warrants.
A second.
All right, second, all in, I'm sorry, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, all right. So next item is our raves. Who'd like to go first?
You know, I'm going to jump off, I'm binding up a little bit here and
Okay.
I'll join you next time.
Okay, good night, John.
Take care, John. So I, my rave was for the appointment, several appointments tonight to the Cultural Council, a couple to
a couple to open space and to Community Preservation Committee. We've had some openings and it's been a little bit challenging recruiting, but somehow we've recruited really, really fine people. And as Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, I am just absolutely thrilled that Alan will be joining CPC. Besides Mr. Wilhamsen, there's probably nobody that serves on more committees in town than we're thrilled to have Alan on CPC.
All right, excellent. My rave is for the Plimpton Police Open House. What a great thing, you know, at this time, to really invite the community in, to meet the officers. This is a great time for some goodwill with, with our police department. And I'm so appreciative of them opening their doors and inviting people in. Cute little logo. It says Coffee with a Cop and there's contact information. If you wanted more information, I'll just read the, the phone number. It's 781-585-3339, extension 539. And that is for Lacy Ie Aramo. And I probably butchered her last name and I apologize for that. But very cool that they're doing this with a community. So I'm thankful for that. All right, so our next meeting is, looks like November 1st. We'll be meeting at 5:45. So I, we don't have any other business, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Joy, yes. All right, so thank you, everyone, for joining and have a wonderful evening and we'll see you in two weeks. Good night. Good night.